Allegiance followed by the Chair's invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we ask for your presence today amongst us as we set priorities and goals as reflected in the 2024 budget. We ask that our thoughts, our spoken words, and our plan be favorable in your sight. Grant us patience and kindness, but most importantly wisdom, to do the work of the county reflective of your will. In your name we pray. Chair comments this morning include welcoming Callie Dyer to the Board of Compass Area Mental Health, and I noticed that she's here today. Thank you for agreeing to serve. I would note that we also on that board have one at-large position still available in the 13 area counties. So if anybody from Finney County or from those area counties would like to serve on Compass's volunteer board, please let Compass Area Mental Health know that. We begin today with the consent agenda. Commissioners, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second? And moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next move to public comment. If there's any public comment today, it'll be limited to three minutes unless at the discretion of the Chair, it should go longer. We are not here to discuss employment issues during public comment or other items that are on the budget. Is there any public comment? Please state your name.
Good morning, I'm Callie Dyer with Livwell Finney County. I'm, good morning Commissioners. I'm here to let you all know that we were notified on Thursday of last week that we were awarded a $625,000 grant from the White House to address marijuana and alcohol in our community. It'll be over a five-year period. And we are very pleased to be one of 65, 165 communities throughout the United States. So, very pleased to have that. So, just letting you know.
Thank you.
Questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please come forward if you'd like to make a pop, a request for making a public comment. You may, and then state your name, please.
Sorry, sir, I gotta go real quick. Um, so I work 40 hours a week. My wife works two jobs.
State your name, sir.
Dylan Smith.
Thank you.
Um, I work 40 hours. She just worked a 60-hour week last week. I'm waiting on a part for my dishwasher to show up because I can't afford a new one. So basically, we can't have any tax raises. I mean, as simple as that. It's not complicated. I don't know what else to say. I don't know what else to do. We need your help.
Appreciate your comments. Next.
My name is Ernie Warden. Tax rate is 4.42% for the increase. Leave out half of it. You're looking at a 9% total increase for my property tax. Home evaluation increase of 3,000, sorry, $36,898 for 2023. Increase of evaluations means there's severe inflationary pressure on the occurring city. That spouses a hazard for the average citizen, but a windfall for the city-county when it comes to collecting taxes. Looking at census data for the national average income for quintile two and three for middle class, my property tax in relation to middle-class income has been steady at about 8% per year for the last 17 years. The 23 proposed budget will be out of line at 9.26 tax relative to medium household income. This proposed budget will be a relative increase of 972.4 above the, what the city has been charging for the 18 years for the same property. The average inflation rate per year for the US for 2006 through 2020 was 2.41%. The average property tax increase on my property has been 5.17% per year for the same time period. Total percentage increase from 2006 to 2023 over the 17-year period has been 134%. My question is, where does the extra revenue have been going above the rate of inflation? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Comments?
Hey, thanks for your time. I know you're never gonna make anybody happy serving on a committee or volunteering. Hi Larry. But guys, oh Shelley Smith, Shelley Smith, sorry. I'm nervous, I'm upset.
Welcome to the county commission and.
Working towards furious, guys. This is out of control. I'm asking you to take care of the 39,000 citizens of our county today. I know the department heads, I know people that work for the county, though they're doing a good job. I appreciate the services. My son that was just up there here, the redhead, he pulled information from me this morning. Since 19, their taxes have gone up 21%. My daughter-in-law said, "We could afford our home when we bought it. We can't anymore." You know, you're, you're killing these young families. Did you know that 62% of our families are on free and reduced meals? I called the school district Friday. So how, 62% can't afford to feed their own kids according to those standards. Can we really in good conscience? And maybe they're not homeowners, but I've talked to landlords. Rents are going up. They've got to. They gotta cover these costs. We cannot afford this anymore. I did some looking at us. I mean, look at all of us. We're middle-aged, we've worked hard. I know some of you guys. We were able to get in homes when it was affordable. These young families, we're killing them. My, my son thought he had a meltdown the other day when he realized what these taxing entities are doing to us. The taxes on my home, um, sorry. The taxes on my home have gone up 34% since 2019. And I'm gonna be at $405 a month on property taxes. I know you guys are only one piece of the puzzle, but $405 a month for my home. I'm driving a 17-year-old vehicle. No wonder I can't afford to buy a new one. And I'm very happy with it. I'm frugal. But at $405 a month just for property taxes? Not acceptable. My husband and I and the bank own a commercial property. We've had 21% tax increase on that since 19. And with these proposed increases, if you don't vote no, it's gonna take over three months of gross rent to pay our property taxes. Now, if you vote yes, I'd like to collect your addresses in the next three months. I'll come by and collect your net paycheck. I'll be happy with that. Because all these taxing entities are taking over three months of my gross rental income. And we still have to pay expenses and income tax. It's out of control. I believe all the people in our county heads are smart. They gotta figure out a way to get it under control. We gotta prioritize, push some things off. I appreciate the county grading my road and doing snow removal. I live out in the county. But man, if I gotta drive on a bumpy road a few more days? Fine. I can't absorb any more of this. And again, you're killing our young families. If your goal is to keep young families from being homeowners in this community? We're well on our way because they, they don't have any pockets left to dig into, guys. You've dug everything out.
Thank you for your comments, your time.
This is.
And would you please summarize it in a short period or a short closing?
Yeah, please put our citizens above our county heads. Tell them, hey, you guys are smart, figure it out. Put the people who voted you in. Think about them and what it's doing. You're, you're just slaying us, man. All right.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, are there any other public comments? All right. We'll move on then to the business items on the agenda. And first up is Jenny Newberry, our Assistant County Administrator, with a consideration to adopt the resolution. Jenny, please state your name, please.
Good morning Commissioners, Jenny Newberry. Assistant County Administrator and Finance Director. This morning, the Board is being asked to adopt Resolution 19-2023 for affiliation with Kansas Police and Fire, transferring all eligible positions from capers, Kansas Public Employment Employers Retirement System to KP&amp;F. This request for affiliation to KP&amp;F was first presented to and discussed with the Board during the work session on July 3rd, 2023, and then discussed further for a second time at the work session on August 7th, 2023. The current positions that are eligible for affiliation are all of the EMS technicians. And then at the Sheriff's Office, it would be the Sheriff, Under Sheriff, Jail Administrator, Administrative Lieutenant, All Patrol Deputies, All Warrant Deputies, Investigators. And I believe these are all certified positions. The Board will need to take formal motion to adopt Resolution 19-2023 for KP&amp;F funding to officially become a part of the county budget. Your alternatives are to adopt Resolution 19-2023 to affiliate with KP&amp;F and transfer all eligible positions from capers, or not adopt the resolution and retain current affiliation with capers only. The estimated annual fiscal impact would, on those eligible positions from ca, their current impact on capers is 339,000. The annual estimated impact moving to KP&amp;F would be 846,000 with a net of 701, or 500,000. Is there any questions?
Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would ask that we have our Sheriff come up and visit with us a little bit because they're, well, and even, even our EMS Director, because it's my understanding that a lot of this recommendation has to do with recruiting and retention of people in those two offices.
Thank you Commissioner Pishney. We, we will hear both from the Sheriff and Skylar Swartz, the EMS Director. Gentlemen, you've been through this process. Why is KPF funding for retirement so important to each of you?
Sheriff Mike Warren, for us, we're competing with our surrounding law enforcement agencies to hire people. There's many agencies around us that have KP&amp;F. We've missed out on some hiring already because we don't offer that. And, and Garden City Police Department has that, Kearney County Sheriff's Office, Gray County Sheriff's Office, Haskell County Sheriff's Office. So it is a recruiting tool for us. We, we can't get any good quality people as everybody is shorthanded. I believe that we've had several offers we've put out there and because we didn't have that, they, they turned us down.
Thank you. Skylar?
I've been pretty much echo what Sheriff said. It's the same reason for us. It's definitely, for us, it's more of a recruitment tool for technicians that maybe aren't brand-new, out of school. Some of that are, have had some experience and are thinking of the benefits of retirement. It's definitely, and especially when they compare that to their firefighter brethren that have that. It will make a difference for those, especially for, if we're looking to get higher on technicians that have, that are not just fresh out of school.
Other questions for Commissioners?
Just a follow-up to both of the individuals, Mr. Chairman. That is, this is not the first time that the idea of moving from capers to KP&amp;F has arisen, but for the spirit of transparency for the public and so forth, how long has this discussion been taking place? And I'm not trying to pick out a specific date, but years, months, weeks? How long have we considered doing something like this? Why is it being brought to us this particular year versus last year, next year, et cetera?
I know for the, for the Sheriff's Office, I can remember clear back when Sheriff Craig was, and that's, that's been over 25 years ago that he was Sheriff. He brought it up, and then Sheriff Basky brought it up as well, I think, at least twice to my knowledge, trying to get us transferred. I, I believe in today's world is why we're pushing even harder, just because of the recruiting. I, I don't know that it was back in the day when they tried it as big as recruiting as it is now, where we're all just so shorthanded and every little thing you have as an edge to get somebody here to work for us is beneficial.
Any comment to that?
Nothing more to add than, yeah, it's the shorthandedness, desire for recruitment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do each of you fellows believe that this will have a impact on recruiting and retention of key employees?
Yes.
I believe it will greatly. Like I said, we've had, just off the top of my head, I, I believe about three officers that I, I believe we could have already had working for us had we had it.
Very good, thank you, man. Jenny, I'm gonna ask you to come back. If I understand correctly, the fiscal impact is as demonstrated in the program for this year. It's 339,000 and for the 2024 budget, 507,000.
That would be the, the 507 is the, is the increase over what it would be to pay just straight capers for those positions in '24. The 339 is their straight capers for 2024.
And, Mr. Administrator, has this increase been included in the published budget?
It has.
Well, I'll make the first remarks regarding this. Our EMS and our Sheriff's deputies are the people that respond to danger. They run to danger. And they are essential to our community for our well-being. While we know that we have a responsibility to taxpayers, as discussed during public comment, the concerns of the taxpayers today are not the first time that this commission has heard from taxpayers with regard to an attempt to hold the line on taxes. For those in the room, you should know that this commission is going to cut the mill levy this year. That might be news to those who made comments to the commission. But it may not be net revenue neutral. And we'll have a vote on that later when the budget comes up. So in my opinion, I'll be voting yes on a proposed motion to approve the presentation by Ms. Newberry for the benefit of our Sheriff's deputies. The, let me get the terminology correct. This will be for your certified law enforcement personnel and for EMS personnel.
Correct.
Because I don't think our bailors get the KP&amp;F designation. Is that correct, Sheriff?
They do not at this time. If they were to become eligible in the future, they would automatically be put into this program. There, we won't have a choice in that.
When we went through the budget process, the work sessions, taking care of our people and assisting the people that actually do the work of the county, it was a priority of this commission, and this carries forward with that goal as set forth by the commission. Any further comments from the Commissioners?
I have some questions. Jenny, help me clarify, this is 20, 23%. Is there a matching percentage from the employees? About any percentage?
There is. I can't remember what it is. It's in my other notes.
If I remember right, their, their percentage goes up as well. I believe it's somewhere around 8%, if I remember correctly.
Okay, and I guess my second question, is their capers account still active? Do they have that also?
I believe that they will have dual, it will, as the way that we were presenting it right now, we would not be paying back, so they would have dual retirement when they.
That was my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
I would like to, to point out for the public's consumption, some of the positions that EMS and that the Sheriff's Office is trying to fill have been vacant for as long as, as seven years, as I recall. Does that sound right?
Correct.
So, when they say they're trying to do something to attract applicants, they're trying to do something to attract applicants and not have a seven-year vacancy.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other comments from Commissioners? If not, is there a motion or a position with regard to the alternatives as presented, adopt Resolution 19-23, do not adopt 19-2023?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt Resolution Number 19-2023 and for KP&amp;F, which is what Kansas Police and Fire, I believe, is.
Correct.
What the acronym stands for.
Yes.
Funding. And authorize you to sign the affiliation agreement. The Chair to sign the affiliation agreement.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 19-2023 to appropriate eligible positions from capers to KP&amp;F. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to our Sheriff's deputies and EMS personnel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Is this better? My bad, thank you. The appropriate hour has passed, so we can conduct a public hearing on the 2024 budget. As noticed, Madam Clerk, I believe the first item is to have a roll-call vote on the published budget on revenue net neutral. Is that correct?
Yeah, first, we should open a public hearing on the revenue neutral rate. And the, there's a resolution that you'll have to consider adoption of, and that is to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we go into public hearing for the discussion and hearing, hearing from the public on the new neutral rate for 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to conduct a public budget hearing with regard to Resolution 20-23 for revenue net neutral rate. We're going to exceed it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're now conducting a public hearing with regard to the resolution proposed to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And at the end of this hearing, we'll be casting our votes on this issue by roll-call vote. The session is now open for a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission regarding the issue of revenue neutral rate? You may come forward. No, I want you to come to the microphone so the people out there can hear you. And please first state your name.
Shelley Smith? Do you suppose maybe we have a problem filling positions when people look at our taxes? They may look for a home and go, wow, we can't afford that. It's, it's all a big ball, guys. It just keeps rolling and rolling, and I've heard your comments, and I appreciate that. But again, these rate increases, 34%, 20%? I just gotta throw it back out there again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments with regard to revenue neutral rate as the budget is published? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and state your name, and don't be in a hurry.
Hi, my name's Megan Catchpole. I'm newer to the Garden City area. And my husband and I both moved out here for jobs. We both work in healthcare. And I would second that I think the tax increases are kind of cost prohibitive for people to relocate out here. I think it will make Kearney County, Haskell County, Scott County more attractive for people when they are looking to come out to southwest Kansas. And so I worry about eroding the tax revenue by these increases. That would definitely impact my husband's and my ability to stay here and I think to recruit other people in our healthcare fields, especially in this economic time. I hear from many of my older patients who are on a fixed income, they're concerned about keeping their houses. And they are Garden City natives. Like they're the foundation of this community. They wanna retire here, they have grandchildren here. My husband and I, we don't have family here, so we're less tethered. But I feel for my, my clients who live here, work here, raise their families here, and they're concerned about keeping their homes. So just something to think about when you think of these changes.
Thank you very much. Last time, any further comment on this public hearing for the purpose of comment related to the proposed use of funds and revenue neutral rate? Hearing none, motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now time to conduct a roll call vote on the issue of revenue, net revenue neutral. We need to have a motion to approve the
Adopt resolution twenty.
Adopt resolution twenty dash twenty-three. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty dash twenty-three as proposed. Any further comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I was thinking we had to do roll call.
I'm, I'm gonna get to that. Now, in order to conform with the statute, it has to be by roll call. We'll go from left to right. Commissioner Davey Jones?
Aye.
Dwayne Dreese?
Aye.
Jerry Schultz, aye. Commissioner Pischny?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Jones?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else we need, Madam Clerk, on ret, net, net revenue neutral to comply with Senate Bill thirteen for the people in Topeka, making sure that we comply with all their wishes?
No, sir.
All right. I'll sign that resolution. While we're getting the paperwork signed, I would like the folks in the audience to know that net revenue neutral is a combination of both increased valuation and mill levy. The mill levy on the budget that we will consider here shortly actually lowers the mill levy. But we also know that this year you'll face considerable increases in valuation. And so therefore, with reducing the mill levy, but with the increases in your valuation, the money that the county collects is going to be more than the money that we collected last year. Aha. That means that we are successful in our community. Your property is worth more than it was the year before. We have a vibrant and engaging economy. And I'm proud to say that I hope that that continues in the future. Thank you, Commissioner Dreese.
Keeping you on your toes, Larry.
Yeah. Don't worry. We'll have to correct it. Dwayne signed in my spot. So, the names don't match up. Mr. Pischny, would you interliniate that, please? thousand twenty-four budget. As you know, Jenny, we went through several work sessions on the budget as commissioners with the help of the finance committee, yourself and the administrator. We have some additional budget reductions that we want to implement to assist the taxpayers and also fairly allocate the resources of the tax dollars. Would you go ahead and present the two thousand twenty-four budget?
Sure. Would you please bring up the PowerPoint? In the next slide, in the, to, short, this is just a short presentation of how the fiscal committee got to the budget as presented. This slide represents a consolidation of the long list of priorities that were discussed in various work sessions with the Board of County Commissioners and department heads and elected officials. Each department brought their struggles and suggestions to the session for discussion. And this is the consolidation of those meetings. The majority of these topics are in the process of being addressed in twenty-three or will be addressed in the twenty-four, in the proposed twenty-four budget and beyond. On the next slide, this short list was the final priority list that the Board of County Commissioners set forth for the fiscal committee and administration to follow on, at the June fifth meeting. This refined list was developed, is very similar to the list developed by the board the last two budget years. Over the past three budget years, starting with the two thousand twenty-one develop, budget development, the fiscal committee has focused on developing and executing financial strategy to achieve these goals set forth by the board. The following three slides are a sampling of the initiatives and efforts made to achieve the board's objectives that were put before us. On the next slide, that first goal was to address the people in retention. And this is just a short list, the sampling of efforts that were designed to attract and retain talent needed to provide, needed to provide the core services of the county. All of these are incorporated in the twenty-three and twenty-four budget already. Next slide, please. Facility upkeep and improvements and maintenance are not new goals. They have been the backbone of budgets, starting in two thousand twenty-one and carried into the future. This slide and the following two slides show how administration and the fiscal committee are working to accomplish the Board of County Commissioner twenty-two four goal of facility upgrades as well as the use of one-time funding. Work sessions and budget building of the twenty-three budget began to set these projects in motion. The first two thousand twenty-three planning project presented on this list was presented during work sessions and budget presentation involving the HVAC debt on this building, on the administration building. The purchase price of the unit was six point five million with lease payments originally set up to coincide with the two thousand eighteen BRMP sales tax issue to support these. Payments were set to be paid through two thousand twenty-three with the BRMP set, set to expire in two thousand twenty-seven. This left a five-year gap in payments, leaving two point five million without funding. During last year's planning, it was proposed that we accelerate the payoff to coincide with the retirement of the BRMP sales tax by making payments monthly to debt sinking fund from the sales tax fund and one-time annual payment from the general fund. This allows the sales tax and one-time payment, oh, sorry, this allows this, the lease to be paid off early with savings to the county of one hundred and ninety-two thousand approximately. The remainder of these items are included in the two thousand twenty-three budget and the proposed two thousand twenty-four budget. Current cash reserves are the result of three years of planning for these projects. With the addition of ARPA and other one-time funding allows them to be completed without having to make any additional debt issues or having a significant impact to any single budget year. Next slide. This slide is just the continuation of the projects that have been discussed by the board during work sessions. These are planned projects for twenty-four and twenty-five with anticipated funding noted. Also note that there is a potential lease purchase for the upgrades to the LEC that may potentially be needed. And this lease should coincide with the duration of a possible sales tax renewal after the BRMP is set to expire. So that no additional tax would need to be levied for that project. On the next slide, the twenty-six through thirty goals, these are other projects that have been proposed as potential projects. Planning would begin in the two thousand twenty-five budget and can continue for two thousand twenty-three. The total cost of all of these projects on the prior four pages is roughly sixty to sixty-eight million with sixty-five to seventy-two percent of the funding already identified. This does include a possible tax referendum in late twenty-six or twenty-seven to complete the LEC building. And then the next two slides is just your budget as presented and what was published. On the next slide, this budget does represent a one point one million increase in levied tax over the two thousand twenty-three budget. The two thousand twenty-three tax levied was twenty-seven million two hundred and six, seven hundred and forty-nine with a mill levy of forty-nine point nine four six. The proposed two thousand twenty-four tax levy would be twenty-eight million three hundred and twenty, three twenty-one with a mill levy of forty-eight point one one six. Revenue neutral rate is forty-six point zero eight zero. The two thousand twenty-four budget is an increase to revenue neutral rate, but an overall reduction of one point eight three mils levied. Delinquency rate is three percent. Prior years were three and a half and three point four percent. The budget was built to support the long-term planning of all previously shown projects as well as the ability to react to unexpected changes or emergencies that may present themselves without significant impact to any of the planned projects. And the following two slides are suggestions that you have made in the reduction to the budget as presented. The outside agency funding is the first one. And this table represents outside agency funding requests as well as the two thousand twenty-three approved funding and suggested a, suggested adjustments made by the board during the work session. Suggested funding adjustments would be a reduction of two hundred and twelve, twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty-one from the budget as presented, reducing the proposed property tax by approximately point three six mils to roughly nine hundred thousand overall increase from two thousand twenty-three. And I will need a formal action to
Aren't there another slide there?
There
Additional
There is. The, the final slide is the suggestions that were made during the work session to look at the elimination of a couple of positions that have been open, two in the sheriff's office, two in EMS, and one in building maintenance. Those positions would reduce the budget by approximately three hundred thousand, including benefits, or just over a half a mil, resulting in a six hundred thousand increase over the tax levy from prior year.
Can we put both of the suggested reductions from the published budget into one vote?
Yes.
Discussions or questions from the commissioners to Jenny with regard to the proposed two thousand twenty-four budget with the proposed suggested reductions? Mr. Jones?
Could the EMS director and the sheriff tell us and tell the citizenry how many vacant positions they still have after we take away the funding for these?
That would be fine, if they know off the top of their head. Sheriff, Skyler?
Sheriff Warren, I believe, after taking those, that should put us down to, off the top of my head, I'm gonna say about ten.
Correct. Ten positions still on field.
Still on
Thank you, Mike.
So I currently have five on field. Well, as far as people staffing and ambulance, I have five. And if we take those two down, that'll bring it down to three. It's, I know this is kind of late, but I, it's, we're, we're talking about reducing a, an ambulance potentially here with it. And, you know, we've had numerous occasions where we are running at a status zero or where I have a, a supervisor that is the next up. And he is waiting on, he has to rely on, on fire, he's manning an ambulance by himself or herself. And then they have to have a fire department help out with those. We've had sixty of those instances in the last three months where we've had a status zero.
Detective Skyler?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the commission? I think we'll go ahead and do it by two separate votes. Let's do the outside agency reduction by a vote. Is there a motion on the outside agency? If you'll flip back a screen, please, to the outside agencies.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the outside agency funding request as presented.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to fund the outside agencies with a reduction of two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Is any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, and I voiced this in our work session the other day. I, I am troubled by, we, on the outside agencies of leaving everyone at last year's allocation except for one agency. And it's, we've, we've permitted a forty percent increase in that one agency. And so I will be voting no.
Thank you. Any other comments on this motion, then? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four one. Let's take up the next issue, next slide on reductions of the published budget, proposed pub, public budget. Is there a motion with regard to these suggested reductions from the
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer the motion. I don't know quite how to word it, but eliminating two EMS positions, two jail deputy positions, and a building maintenance tech, two, what else needs to be included in that motion? Isn't that enough?
As long as Jenny believes that that will authorize her to make those
She has it. So, all right. Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to make the additional Board of County Commissioners suggested reductions to the proposed two thousand twenty-four budget, saving the county approximately two hundred and thirty-five to three hundred thousand, depending on the adjustments. Is there any further comments?
A question more than a comment, Mr. Chairman, and directed to our administrator. It troubles me that we, from a boardroom, are pinpointing the exact positions to eliminate. Are we permitted by statute to say X dollars from those budgets and allow the directors of those budgets to determine which positions it might be, is my question?
Willie, in general, the answer is yes. If you are targeting positions, if you're targeting dollar amounts, well, then that's an entirely different thing, where they may be able to look at other things other than positions.
Well, I guess, maybe to further clarify, from my policy governance mentality, it seems that we're micromanaging from the boardroom when we say two EMTs, two jail deputies. And maybe I should have asked the question in the pers, from the perspective of personnel, you know, that if we say we're, we want to eliminate X dollars from your personnel budget, are we permitted to do that? And then, for example, just because it's first on the list, if in the EMS, it's not the two EMT positions that are eliminated, but it's two other positions that equal that dollar amount, I think we've given more latitude to the directors and we haven't handcuffed them as much if circumstances change tomorrow and that's not the two positions that we're concerned about.
Yes, I understand your question is, well, by way of example here for, with the sheriff's office, other than jailers, after following that, the lower paid positions are on the administrative side following that. By selecting jailers, then the question is, are you still able to operate the jail? And right now, you're running approximately one hundred and thirty-five inmates there with, with the proper staffing that, that you have. That's one question. And as Skyler pointed out, your EMS operations, you have three ambulances that you run on an annual basis. It takes two per unit. So you need six to operate a shift. You have three shifts, eighteen. With this reduction, you go from eighteen to sixteen. So you inherently now have, on two shifts, created a shortage. And the only way to do that is to continue to run three, three EMS units, is you're gonna have to offer overtime, which we're currently do- have to offer overtime, which we're currently doing now, just to try and keep them up and running now. So I think it's, the question is, in addition to the dollar amount, number of personnel and so forth, is how does it affect the operations of it? And that's, and yes, I know you stated that's more my beely wick, and so you've, in one instance, you may have thrown a bit of a curve in trying to maintain one portion of your emergency service operations, such as EMS, to try and keep it running at an efficient rate, so we can serve those people. We can do it either way, either way you want to do it. If you choose to go two, 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 and one, we'll make, we'll make those adjustments.
Well, my, Mr. Chairman, turning back to the chair. Mr. Chairman, my concern is not about trying to do some reductions of unfilled positions, trying to lower the mill levy, the tax levy, so forth. I'm a taxpayer as well. I would rather pay less taxes. However, I also have kept in mind all the way through this project, as well as the other eight years of the budget process, services versus revenue. You know, what services do we want and need, and what revenue does it take to generate those services? And so, and lastly, I am most concerned probably about handcuffing directors, elected or non-elected, that they don't have some latitude to move within that budget. And our job here at the boardroom is to set the financial parameters, in my observation, and how do we do that and give them some latitude. So I don't want it to be perceived at all that I'm against trying to lower the budget, lower the mill levy, and so forth, but I don't want to hamper our directors from being able to provide the services that are requested, required, and needed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to withdraw my motion and restate it, to not eliminate positions, but rather to eliminate the salary or the budget impact equivalent to those positions. And then that lets the directors decide how they want to do it.
Is that satisfactory for reducing the budget?
Yes.
Would you, we need to withdraw a second and resecond?
Not without a comment first.
Okay.
We extensively looked at these open positions, and we're budgeting for opening positions that haven't been able to be filled, and no people willing to take those positions for years. I think that was the whole thought behind cutting some of these positions. These positions have been opening for years, and yet we're billing the taxpayers for keeping those budgeting positions open. And so that was the whole thought behind this. So, no, I'm going to stand by my second.
All right, got an interesting question, got a request to withdraw motion, and there has not been a second to the request to withdraw it. However, the original motion is on the table and has been seconded. So, taking that into consideration, the parliamentary person in me wants to allow the person to withdraw their motion, and we'll see which way this goes. But however, I think we have to take up the motion and the second as presented, and then we'll consider any of our other options. Given the circumstance that the person who made the motion wants to withdraw it, keep that in mind as you vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Three to two, the motion fails. Now, do we have a new motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll restate the motion, that the reduction of budget equal to the positions of two EMS, EMTs, and two jail deputies for the sheriff's office, and equal to the cost of a building maintenance tech to be withdrawn from this year's budget.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to shift the motion to just a pure dollar amount, rather than the elimination of positions. I'm going to be opposed to this motion, as I think that during our work session, we determined that the best interest of the county was to eliminate the positions, to encourage the performance of duties of the county at the fullest level, and that this was one of the ways the policy would be implemented to assist department heads and elected officials to know that if positions remain empty for a too-long period of time, that the board would remove those positions unless there was a showing that the functions of the office was materially going to be affected. Any other comments on the motion?
My comment, without belaboring it, Mr. Chairman, is I think we're doing the same thing with the motion that's on the table.
All right, any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Are you voting nay or aye?
Nay.
All right, motion fails, two to three. New motion on eliminating the positions, Commissioner Dries?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go back to the original motion and eliminate two EMS positions, two sheriff deputy positions, and one building maintenance tech positions from their respective budgets.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to take up the original motion, and there'll be a period of comment. Commissioner Davy Jones?
Well, the county administrator has something...
I heard the motion being eliminating two sheriff's deputies.
Jail deputies.
Okay.
They're still sheriff deputies.
Original motion, Swinney.
Is that your second? All right, is there additional comment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Would you make those budgetary savings? And if I understood your presentation correctly, we just got within six-hundred thousand in net revenue neutral. Is that correct, Jenny?
That's what our anticipated amount will be. I will have to do the adjustments, because there is calculation for some other things in there that are calculated in that spreadsheet, but I will bring it back to you after those adjustments have been made.
All right, Mr. Administrator, may we dismiss Jenny and ask her to make those calculations?
Would, I apologize for interrupting, but would you want to hold the public hearing first for the budget, just in case there's anything else for consideration?
Well, we don't have all the final numbers yet, so maybe the public would want to comment on the, when they see the numbers.
About recessing.
Yeah. Well, before we do, Mr. Chairman, I should have said this in the comments with regard to the motion. I specifically asked that the minutes reflect, I did not vote for this motion, or, excuse me, against this motion because it reduces budget. I'm in favor of reducing budget, but because of the principle of the way the motion was worded. So I would very much ask that the minutes reflect the reason for my nay vote.
Jenny, how long do you think it'll take to get them finalized?
Twenty minutes.
All right, we'll try, we'll go ahead and take up the county attorney building, give you a chance to get that done, and keep on track. And when you get that done, let us know, and we'll conduct the public hearing on the budget as finalized.
Do we need to come out of public hearing to...
You already did that.
We weren't in public. We weren't in public.
Okay, all right.
Had public hearing on net revenue neutral.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, we will now take up the business of the county attorney building project. County attorneys, please state your name.
Susan Richmire, Fannie County Attorney. And what we're requesting is basically an updating of our office. This project has been something we've talked about internally for three, probably three years, and over the course of that time, we've set aside money in our capital improvement fund, as well as our technology fund. And so what we're requesting from the county is the ability to make these improvements to the building. What it will allow for is additional office space and conference space for us to be able to fit everyone within our office into one room for training purposes, which we cannot do right now, without basically sitting on top of each other, and we don't have the technology for remote presentation, efficient remote presentation, that's probably the best way to put it. What we're asking for from the county is a hundred-and-fifty thousand from the ARPA funds. The remaining three-hundred-and-thirty thousand will come from monies already set aside in our reserve funds. And then we have proposed, or what we're anticipating as being able to transfer into the capital improvement from this year's budget due to employee shortage. We, that's from the first part of the year, and we, however, are fully staffed, I believe, as of October first.
All right, Mr. Administrator, we have the need to send out a request for qualifications on an architect?
Yes, we'll be sending that out this week for those, locally.
And if we get this thing funded, what's the timeframe of getting this project started to start tearing down some walls?
Oh, that's entirely going to be up to the architects on that, on that aspect of it.
Okay, and do we need two board members to work with yourself and the county attorney to choose an architect?
Correct. If you don't mind, I'd like to have the same two that met last time with the sheriff's office, and that would be Commissioner Dries and Commissioner Pishney. And not only for this project, but for the health department EMS building and the improvements to the fairgrounds facility down there.
Mr. Richmire, do you, you used, you have some architectural drawings from a firm of your choosing. However, this being a county building, we need to have the requests for qualifications go out at the meeting as suggested. Do any of the other commissioners wish to serve on the county attorney project? Hearing that, then, which do we want to do first, the funding or the process of choosing the architect?
Mr. Chairman, I would really like to see the project architect designed before we approve the funding. I think that could make a difference in our...
Right.
And what this project will cost.
So the drawings are up on the board. I don't know if you can see them from there, Commissioner Dries, but in the basement currently, it is roughly three-quarters storage, or, well, I mean, probably half storage. We do have a small conference room. I don't know if it's easier for me to talk to you from over there, so I can show you where the changes are actually going to occur, or if you'd rather me just kind of verbally tell you what the changes would be.
Mr. Chairman, we had the privilege to attend the, you and I, on the county attorney's proposal here, that she may explain to the rest of the commission and the public exactly why this is needed, and I could, we need to have her do that entail.
All right, would you go ahead and address Commissioner Jones's remarks?
Okay, I'll have to get away from the microphone, so I'll try to talk really loud. Currently, I'll stand here, currently, this entire portion right here, and this portion here is all storage, as well as this. We have forty, fifty years of boxes within our basement full of old files, which we've been systematically going through scanning and shredding for the last three years. What we'd like to be able to do is to take, there's a small conference room that sits here. We'd like to be able to take that and make it large enough for our entire staff. It will also include a kitchen app for training, and then we have the technology, what we're aiming for is electrical outlets underneath the tables, technology along all of the walls for viewability when we have our training. It would also allow for us to bring in some of our partners to do training within our own building. What we cannot do with a lot of our staff, because we are subject to federal requirements through CEGIS, so anyone who comes and enters into our building must be cleared by CEGIS, so that training will happen. So if we have outside agencies, we can't, we can't do it internally, but we can have internal enforcement agencies within our building. That is also going to, I thought I had done three offices, but it would be an addition of three offices downstairs currently, running really tight in our office space on the upstairs. We, with our child victims, do not have any place for them to go when we have trials, interviewing our witnesses prior to trial. And this would allow for us to have a child zone, as well as connecting conference rooms. The additional access controls here, here, and here are steel doors that are accessed only by badge, so that's a security thing we do not currently have. And that has been recommended by some of our law enforcement partners, because our building is not secure, secure access. This is a pipe dream on the exercise part. If it doesn't get used for that, it will be an additional conference room. And then upstairs, next slide, I think. Upstairs, what we're doing, this, none of this will be reconfigured on the exterior. What's getting reconfigured is the interior. We're adding workstations here for our victim witness and diversion coordinators. Those are two, I mean, they're two very prominent positions within our office. Just our recent case alone, we have over fifty-some victims, and this would allow for them to have easier access to the front. And then for anyone who's had a traffic ticket and been able to benefit from our diversion program, this allows for our diversion coordinator to have easier access. And then all of our staff would be allowed to be within the same area. Right now, they're spread, they're spread between here and just kind of all over, so there's not a lot of reconfiguration on the upstairs. It's more updating and making it twenty-twenty-three, rather than building, I believe, twenty-four years ago, and hasn't had any of that ready to be fitted. So, any questions? More than how to...
I don't have any questions about the remodel. I just want to get the process started so that we can get it down the road. Dries makes a good point that we ought to, before we fund the budget, we ought not to give the architect a blank check. So let's back up and let's get the task of getting the architect designated through the proper methodology according to the county policy. And Commissioner Dries, Commissioner Pishney, would you be willing to serve again in that capacity for choosing the architect?
I'm willing to serve on that. Do you want it in the form of a motion to authorize our administrator to go to architects for an RFQ or request for qualifications?
I don't know if we need it in the form of a motion, but that'd be fine. Is that your motion?
I would make that as a motion, yes.
Is there a second?
I agree, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to designate an architect on this project. Administrator, get a meeting set up with folks. This is one of those buildings that was designed and built with local people. I hope that we'll be able to employ the services of local architects on this project. So that'll be up to the four of you to make a recommendation to the whole commission when you've had that interview. But let's get hopping on it.
And just as a matter of course, the only reason we had, we utilized an architect to get these drawings was just to have an idea of what it would cost, and an idea of where the walls and things would be moved moving forward. It was not an intent to give a blank check. It's just like, we needed to have an idea of what kind of money to set aside over the course of time, so that it wouldn't be at an additional, hopeful additional cost to the county, so...
All right, perhaps this would be a good time to take a break, and we will reconvene at nine forty-five.
I have a question on that.
Not now, ma'am, I'm sorry. We'll convene at 9:45, thank you. And the next item on our agenda is taking up the Law Enforcement Center architect and HMN Architects. Sheriff?
Sheriff Mike Warren, again. So you know our, our issue over there. We've hired, or I guess that's what we're here to do, is hire HMN to do an assessment on our building. The architect, and he is here present today, if you guys have any questions, for the structural, electrical, plumbing, HVAC issues that we're having. Also, they're going to do a needs assessment on our type of supervision we have in our jail, just to throw it out there. So our alternatives, I guess, and, and to approve HMN on their proposal, that I believe, hopefully you've all got that, or reject their proposal. It's my recommendation in the staff, also that we go ahead and accept their proposal, and it's a cost up to $50,000, hopefully it'll come in less than that.
Anything else, Sheriff?
That's pretty much what I have is, like I said, they have a timeline on there. I believe that we get started, I think, when their assessment is all done. I believe that'll be their proposal then will be given to us, I believe, in about the middle of October, if I read all that right, yes. And, yeah. It's Sean Harding with HMN Architects, if you have any questions.
Hi, Sean, welcome to the commission. My question for you is, is that we did some preliminary work on needs assessment of the LEC. Have you had a chance to review those?
We have been told that there is a needs assessment, but I've not been able to see the report yet.
And I hope you get that before you make your presentation. Quite a bit was, work was done with Rex and Sheriff and our other occupants of that building, being the city. And would like to have those in your hands for your evaluation. Any questions from the commission to HMN representative? Thank you very much. Is there any other questions for the sheriff? Board members that did the interviews, is this the recommendation that we need to follow through on?
Yes, I might point out that it's, the initial study will apply towards any project work if we do choose to go ahead and do this, is that not correct, Sean?
That is correct. We were kind of given the directive to approach this, I think, a little bit à la carte, for lack of better terms, that there are issues with most of the systems in the building. And that's the focus of our report with some assessment of supervision style as kind of a follow-up to that.
Commissioner Pishney, any remarks?
No, I appreciate the clarification, but that was my understanding as well.
And, Mr. Chairman, this, this firm has done this before around the state. This is not a, you might help us out, the ones that didn't get a listen to this.
So HMN, their focus since 1990, pardon me, 1990 has been healthcare. In 2000, they brought in two people that had a focus for, they referred to it as corrections. I came on board in 2005 and had them change the term to justice because we also do 911 dispatch, we do emergency operations centers, we do courthouses. So we changed that from sounding very pigeonhole, like we just do jails and prisons and stuff. And that's what our focus has been on since I've been there. I don't work on projects really outside of justice. And occasionally, they'll ask my help on, I do a lot of emergency departments because they're a lot like booking areas in a jail. So ambulance garage is much like a Sally Port, and that's where the things get exciting in a hospital. But our focus is justice and healthcare with a little bit of education thrown in on the side.
Available funds for the, this motion to approve HMN up to a cost of 50,000? Mr. Administrator, there's available funds?
Yes, you already authorized that out of ARPA funds.
Very good. Other questions for the architect or the sheriff? Is there a motion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion, but before I do, just clarification. We can authorize you to sign that agreement, can we not, or should it be the chair?
You can, you can do it either way, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the HMN proposal for the Law Enforcement Center at a fiscal impact of no more than $50,000 and authorize our administrator to sign that contract.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to stop there and go backwards to the finalization of the 2024 budget. Jenny, you're back before us, do you have a handout for us?
I do, and Gabby, I emailed that one too. With the changes that you have had me make, this puts us right at 638,000 over last year. It is a reduction of just over 600,000. The mill levy currently sits at 47.309. That is a reduction of .807 from what was presented earlier and an increase of 1.229 from the revenue neutral rate.
And our beginning mill levy was 49 point?
48.116.
Last year's was 49?
49.946 last year.
And if we get to 47,309, my math tells me that that is a reduction of 2?
.6 roughly, yeah.
Okay, I think the question's for Jenny first, and then we'll open up for a public hearing on the 2024 budget as presented. First comments for Jenny from the commissioners? Hearing none, then a motion to have a public budget hearing on this 2024 budget as revised.
We'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Moved and seconded to have a public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Now we'll give the floor to anyone who wants to make a public comment with regard to the 2024 budget as presented and ready for final action.
And the gentleman that just left, please step up to the microphone? Yeah. Hey, sorry, you can come speak now. He had, he had another reading, and he was wanting to speak, and he thought you started, he thought you started the public comments at 8:40 early.
Okay, start over.
So Shelley Smith, Shelley Smith. And I'm nitpicking here, but again, with these tax increases, I am all for working out. Did my 30-minute beach body this morning. Sorry, Susan, I want our employees to be healthy, but why are we paying for them to do it in a county building? And when are they going to do it? I think there's other options. So when I see personal, something like that, I'm like, ding ding ding, let's, I'm not against healthcare. Said, I try to work out every day, but stuff like that, just to me goes to the mindset of, no. You know, do that on a personal level, personal time, do it in your home. If that can save us some money, I don't know if it will, but it just struck a chord with me, thank you.
The other public comments regarding the 2024 budget as revised? If not, we'll move to close the budget, public hearing part, motion?
We'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to go out of public hearing. Is there any other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, back in regular session. Is there a motion to approve this budget as final?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the 2024 Fannie County budget as we've adjusted to a mill levy of 47.309. And total expenditures are, help me here.
20, yeah.
27?
The?
Oh, wait a minute.
No, 50.
Oh, yeah, there, my eyes were focused on the second call. And total expenditures of 62.
And total expenditures of 62 million, 85,159.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Any other discussion from the commissioners regarding the final action on the 2024 budget as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, we have a budget for 2024.
Thank you.
Jenny, thank you for all your hard work. Robert Reese, thank you, Mr. Administrator, really appreciate the hard work of the Finance Committee. The Treasurer, thank you very much, Trista, we appreciate your hard work on getting the budget done. It's a wonderful thing to have behind us. Next on the agenda then is the A M S Medical Directors Agreement. I didn't see one. Madam County Counselor, do we have anything to complete?
Not today, if we can move that to the next meeting, we were hopeful that we would have something done. There's been some back and forth with counsel for the other end, but not quite enough where we're ready to move forward with an agreement today.
Skylar, this is your neck of the woods in your department, do you have anything you need to have the commission know about, or can we move this to the next meeting?
We can move it to the next meeting, but it, it's, we need to get it, and I understand we're waiting on them, but it's, it's vital.
All right. Thank you. We'll table that matter till the next agreement, our next meeting. All right, next on the agenda is the 2023 chip ceiling bid. Mr. Brungard, good morning, please state your name.
Good morning, Larry Brungard, Fannie County Public Works. The Board of County Commissioners is asked to consider and approve awarding the bid to B and H Paving for the 2023 chip ceiling project. The Public Works Department advertised the 2023 chip ceiling project on July 22nd. Bids were opened at 10:00 a.m. on August 22nd at the Public Works Office. One bid was received from B and H Paving for 706,598.30. The 2023 chip ceiling project will include chip ceiling approximately 33 miles of county roads. The 2023 chip ceiling contract has been reviewed by County Council. Alternatives are, number one, the board may accept the bid from B and H Paving and approve the chairman to sign the contract, or number two, the board may not accept the bid from B and H Paving. Staff recommends alternative number one, accept the bid from B and H Paving and approve the chairman to sign the contract. The fiscal impact is 706,598.30 to be paid out of the Public Works budget.
Questions for the presenter, Mr. Brungard?
You've done business with these?
Yes, they've, they've done this the last four out of five years, I believe, and we get really good results with them.
Is this pretty much ballpark where we usually average right in this three-quarter million dollar range for our chip ceiling projects?
This is, I believe, just a little higher per mile than in the past. During the bidding process, they said that it was due to, the, last year was higher, of course, because it will cost. This year, there is a couple of subdivisions in this that takes them a little bit longer, which is the reason why I split up Southwind, Towns, and Sagebrush. Six years ago, I'd done them all at one time, it took them quite a while to get that all done, so I've separated these into one each year.
Which one's getting done this year?
Southwind.
Thank you.
That's your traffic control, is those gaps in the...
You know, we publish a number for taxpayers to get ahold of us, and every person at Southwind has my cell number. So I really appreciate the improvements there, it's been a while since those roads were upgraded and maintained, it'll be good to have that done. Next, I'll get all the complaints about, they had some chip ceiling and some tar on their tire.
On the driveway and on the tires, yes.
All that good stuff, but forge ahead, and, and you'll be contacting the residents to tell them the timing of it.
Right, exactly, yes.
But, Mr. Chairman, it's also important to point out, this is part of our annual maintenance product, projects on our roads, and it's just, just something we have to do to keep our roads up to spec.
Is there, yes, sir?
I'll offer a motion if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the motion that we authorize you to sign an agreement with B and H for paving for the 2023 chip ceiling. There's an amount here somewhere.
706,598.3.
There we go.
And I would second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? I would ask the Administrator to confirm that there's money in the capital improvement fund and no fiscal impact other than budgeted.
Just budgeted, that's correct. That's correct.
Any further discussion on the pending motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is the County Engineer Service Agreement. Administrator Reese, you have the floor, sir.
Commission, we went out to, to market here on the engineering services, sent out 17 requests for qualifications, met with Kirk and Michaels, and negotiated a final agreement with them, that's what you have before you today for your consideration. What we, what we're basically utilizing for is within that summary of the agreement, they will be in-house, approximately a couple hours a week assisting the leadership in Public Works, they'll be sitting in on the weekly director's meeting within the Public Works Department to keep abreast of all the projects. In general, they'll, they'll meet the requirements, your requirements, as needed for a county engineer, and that's what this agreement identifies specifically, is that they'll meet those standards and so forth. I have nothing else on that, other than stand for your questions at this point in time.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Go back to budget issue, the 38.4 annual base out of Public Works, this is...
That has been budgeted for, that's correct, both in the 23 and the...
Correct.
Yes, both in 23 and 24.
And whoever makes the motion, this is set up for the Administrator to sign the contract. Counsel, have you had a chance to review it? I didn't ask you about the chip ceiling contract, but I assume that you had the chance to review it also.
Yes, to both.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the Kirk and Michael Associates' proposal for county engineer and authorize our county administrator to sign the agreement with the annual base rate of 38,400 being paid from Public Works budget.
Second.
If I understood the motion, it was 38.4 annual base rate plus project fees.
Excuse me, I forgot that part, yes.
Is that part of your second also?
Agreed.
That would be correct.
Very good.
I apologize for the omission.
No worries. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Robert, sign that one, it's your leisure. Forging ahead, interesting issue here for Ideatech to be able to use space on our tower that we own out in the country, and also to have space on the top of this building to connect P2P equipment, and the first thing on my mind is to understand what P2P equipment is, but we have our folks here, sir, would you announce yourself?
Doug Peters, Fannie County I T.
Thank you, Doug. What can you tell us about this proposal?
Yeah, Ideatech wants to rent the Fannie County Tower that has not been used in 20 years, we've tried to sell this tower, we've tried to do things with it, and this is really the first offer that we've had. They want to provide ISP service to about 70 very, very rural county residents, so this would be a very good thing, an opportunity for them. Yes, we would be renting space to an ISP essentially utilizing our property.
All right. Questions for the commissioners? I have some for the county counselor, but I'll wait till if anybody has any questions of Doug.
Is this the tower on 23 Highway?
It is that tower, yes, and we do have Ideatech here, if you have any more detailed questions for them also.
Questions?
What, what is a proposal, what kind of a rate?
So we're looking at generating just under $2,000 a year, that would be a yearly payment to the county, and that's more based off of the number of residents than what it is, the tower height or anything like that, just due to, like I said...
I can tell you all about that tower, I was responsible for it being built, 180 feet high.
Right.
And its windshear rating is for 190 mile an hour with two inches of ice on it, that thing is not pipe, it's solid steel.
And it hasn't been used in a long time.
Well, it has been, Doug, the amateur radio folks have...
Oh, do they still?
Yeah, they still do, but...
Okay.
Okay. And Paul's not here, is he? We get a bill of about 10 or 11 dollars a month or something like that for electricity from Lane Scott Cooperative on that, paid from the emergency management fund.
Correct, yes.
It's, it's done its good for the county, so power to you here in getting some good out of it.
I guess my question would be to Ideatech, this won't interfere with the local radio club, or what do you...
Well, they hook the hospitals together, the shirt network.
And they're, they've requested in the agreement that they're using their band range, their wireless equipment band range, and it doesn't look like it would overlap anything else really, so it should be fine.
Okay.
I think, I've not been out for a while, aren't there two antennas up on top? Has anybody been out, like, it's got the rack on it, so several antennas could be mounted.
Correct. We had it flown by G I S, I did not put those pictures in the packet, I can get them added at some point if you guys would be curious, or you can come look at them, or G I S has them.
I think that we're going to handle that concern, one of my questions to the county counselor, does this contractor require Ideatech to not make any interference to the present use of the tower? And to pay for their own utilities for whatever they need?
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, before the commission today is basically, are we good to move forward with working on the agreement in order to move forward with this, not to approve the actual agreement today, and I think that those are all considerations that need to be in the middle of this one, considering the, and I don't know if it's something that it will be in with the electrical bill that we're already receiving on that one, or if it's something that will be set up separately. If we haven't used it in 20 years, are there any upgrades that we're going to have to make, except for we are using it for other purposes, but are there other upgrades that we're going to have to make in order to make it so that we can use the tower for this particular purpose?
Well, and I would like to see it where, whatever they put on the top of this building, if they should cease to use our tower, that they be tied together and remove their property from this building.
They are tied together in this agreement, and the agreement as is right now states that they will be responsible for the cost of their equipment, not interfering with any other use. I do not believe it's got a, anything in it for the utilities, so that may or may not need changed, but like I said, they are already proposing a $2,000 yearly budget of revenue for this item.
Ideatech and you, Doug, and the counselor know that lease agreements, in my opinion, are not settled by arbitration of the American Arbitration Association, we have a district court here in Fannie County that's quite capable of handling these kinds of disputes, and there's not an attorney fee provision for the prevailing party. Those are things that I'd like to see in this agreement, can't speak for the whole commission, but if the matter on the agenda today is to move forward with negotiation and approving the concept, and then subject to a final contract, is that what you see, Mr. Administrator?
Correct, and we can, we can act on it on the 18th when you re-meet.
Yes, sir.
Little quick background, we bought about three acres from Jimmy Hughes to build that tower, so the county owns the land that it sits on, but there's a persistent weed problem, so the county lawnmower goes by there at once in a while, mows it, so in your lease, you want to cover that, perhaps? There was never a contract drawn up stating first right of refusal, but it was generally assumed that if the county decided to do away with the tower and take it down, that that three acre little patch of land go back to the Hughes or whoever owns that, presently owns that quarter section that the tower's on, so if, if you can get some use out of it, I'm all for it, it's, but there are some upkeep issues there.
It does still get mowed and weed sprayed, but not very often.
Yeah, that's, Jimmy Hughes slips over there as a hard man and mows it more than the county does, so...
Probably, yeah. All right, I would entertain a motion to proceed with the concept of...
Working on a lease?
Working on a lease, then bringing it back to the county commission for...
Is there not a lease in our package?
Yeah, there is a lease, but it's not ready to be finalized.
I'll offer that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Yes, there's a second.
Thank you, remember, we're not spending any money, we're not making any deals, we're authorizing the Administrator to continue to work with Ideatech and bring us a contract subject to county attorney or county counselor approval. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. See you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, next on our agenda is Garden City Community College Agreement to Use West Fairground. Madam County Counselor, are we positioned to approve any contract?
Not yet at this point in time, same issue on this one, we did send out some concerns on the agreement as it had been presented approximately a week ago, and have yet to hear quite back on that. We're hopeful that we're close and that we should have something if we can push this one to the next meeting.
With the consent of the commission, I'll just table it and we'll take it up on the 18th. Does that sound all right? All right, thank you, everyone. Lastly, on our agenda, we have Black Hills Improvement and Extension. Mr. Reese, what are we considering here?
This here is part of the overall sewer improvement project that was approved, that was approved back in late 22. In essence, this is, if, Sam, if you can go to the, I think we've got some pictures up here, we have some maps of natural gas lines being ran to the various pump stations that will have emergency backup generators, they currently do not, and so that's all part of the improvements. The disagreement in front of you today is with Black Hills Energy, and, and it is to run those lines for those improvements to those, those lift stations and the backup generators. As a side, side note, the notifications for the bid on this overall project was sent out last week, it'll be published Thursday, I believe, of this week, you'll have a 30-day publication, and you'll be opening bids on this, the first, I believe it's the first week in October, could be the second week of October, so you'll have bids for the overall project excluding these gas line runs. And once again, this is, this will be paid out of the ARPA funds that was set aside for this overall project, this is for all three of the sewer districts, as well as the pump station up north that we inherited.
A question.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. County Administrator, natural gas is going to power what? Don't those?
Backup generators.
Just the backup generator which now has, we don't have backup generators at all those.
No, we don't.
So we're going to run gas and then hope for a backup generator to hook it to?
Yes, the backup generators are within the bids of the overall improvements for all these pump stations.
Okay.
Yes.
The fiscal impact on this is from ARPA funds?
That's correct, that's correct. It's all part of that three point five million dollars that was set aside. I believe the overall cost on this was somewhere around sixty-four thousand dollars, if I remember correctly.
All right, is there any further discussion on the Black Hills Improvement and Extension as presented?
I didn't look at the signature page. Is it set up for the administrator or chairman?
It doesn't specify. So either's fine.
Administrator could do this. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we accept and authorize our chairman, our administrator to sign the agreement with Black Hills for an estimated cost of sixty thousand five eighty to be paid from ARPA funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the administrator to sign the contract with Black Hills for improvement and extension agreement to our various lift stations as submitted. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda is board governance. Madam Clerk, what have we got going?
The calendar list of upcoming meetings and events has been provided in there.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board with regard to those?
Now, just an addition, tomorrow is the showcase in Sablet. I do plan to attend that. It's a leadership showcase that, and we've funded fifty thousand toward those showcase events.
I'd be happy to add those going forward if I could please be notified of them.
That's the only one I'm aware of.
Okay.
Is the one for tomorrow from nine to two.
Would you please?
They have one planned March fifth that is going to showcase the essential services of the county and the city, and that was part of our, what we got for our putting in the fifty thousand for their startup. And I also am aware that they have one in February that's going to showcase healthcare services. I am not sure about the other ones, but I can get you a list to put on here for that.
That February showcase, would you make sure our health department is aware?
Yeah, she, she has been notified.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The library board meetings moved its meeting time, meeting date or day to the fourth Monday of each month at five P.M. And we need, as a public meeting, probably need to list that.
So when is the Fannie County Library meeting? In September?
In September?
Did you say it's the fourth?
Twenty-fifth, I think, is, rings a bell. Does that look like the fifth?
Yeah, that's the fourth Monday.
Yeah, twenty-fifth.
I, I will note that this, this list is the non-recurring meetings or, or meetings that you aren't specifically assigned to for, as a liaison, but I will update the other schedule that has the liaison assignments and meeting dates on it to reflect that change.
All right, anything else about upcoming meetings or events? And we'll move on to staff reports. I did not invite the chief to be here for review of the incident reports. I'm sure everyone had an opportunity, opportunity to review those. We'll now hear from Mackenzie Phillips with regard to development update. Good morning. Please state your name.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, the Development and Administrative Coordinator. So the only update I have for you this morning is I just want to let you know that the annexation request that was approved at the last meeting, that is going before the city commission today for them to consider that request. And that, again, was for the Jenny, the west half of Jenny Barker Road. And that's all I have for you unless you have any questions for me.
No, I do not. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
County Counselor report?
There are a couple of matters of pending litigation, which I've been involved in. Nothing really significant to report, other than there's been some floor movement, nothing that would necessitate probably an executive session and, and an update on that. There have been some filings within the case, which is now with the Supreme Court, involving the Huber Sand matter that we have. Working through the various different contracts, which are before you today and that will be moving, those that will be moving to the next meeting as well, trying to get those all cleaned up and taken care of for board approval.
All right. County administrators report, sir.
We do have a lot of projects that we're now getting off the ground, as you're aware of, with the need for various architects on some of the various buildings that we have. So in essence, once we get those architects in, in place, you'll have about four building projects as you will be, be going on. We had the chip and seal today. We've got the asphalt overlay project coming up. And I believe, if I remember correctly, that is approximately twelve miles of asphalt overlay this year. You'll be seeing bids on that coming up in the next couple of weeks. That went out, as I reported, the, we finally got the sewer project off the ground and it's going out to bid, so hopefully we will see some bids on, on that. As you recall, probably about a year ago or less, we tried to get the north pump station up and running, but was unable to get some bids. So this here being a much larger project, we should be able to attract some, some people on that, so.
Anything else, sir?
That is it for today.
All right. Commissioner Pishney, do you wish to have an executive session?
No, I don't. Well.
Regarding non-elected personnel.
I guess we could do that.
You have a motion? And state who you want present.
Well, I'm not sure. Yeah, wasn't prepared, I'm sorry.
I think it's an issue that needs to be addressed.
But let's see, I would think our administrator, assistant administrator may be present. I don't know that it needs.
And the county clerk?
Well, county clerk is, well, but I don't know that it involves counsel in this.
Correct.
So I would say no, no more than, well, probably ten minutes. I would, or would you think it needs to be longer?
Do we just do ten and if we need to come back in and?
I would move that we go into executive session for the discussion of non-elected personnel for up to ten minutes and include our administrator and assistant administrator and our county clerk.
Your second to the motion.
All those board members.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to go into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel with the administrator, assistant administrator and clerk attending. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're in executive session. We'll be back at ten thirty-five. Motion to go out of executive session, back into regular session. Commissioner Pishney?
So move?
Second.
Second.
Moving second to go out of executive session into regular session. I will confirm for the public and the Commissioners that no formal action was taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Back in regular session, what we have left on our agenda is the Commissioners' reports. And we'll start today right to left. Commissioner Larry Jones?
The one meeting or thing of worth was I listened to the KAC Legislative Committee meeting in Topeka the other day. And it was quite interesting that one of the things that's coming up on their agenda, this upcoming legislative session, is a proposed cap on valuations with a three to 4% growth increase. The only thing about this, you know, when you start doing these type of things, it requires a constitutional amendment if I'm not, my, if I'm remembering things correctly. And that's, that's a big hurdle to get over in the state of Kansas. But they spent a lot of time talking about that. And then there was a also proposal from Riley County on nuisance abatements. And so I, I don't know where that one's going either. But, you know, those, it was kind of interesting to listen to the legislators. And that's one of the things that we probably need to do is have a meeting with our area legislators sometime before the session starts. Have them come to our meeting and sit down and talk about things and see what, see what their thoughts are.
Well, I think that's a great idea. And then also to follow up with legislative coffees during the session as they will have a better lay of the land, so to speak. As that goes forward. Is that your report, sir?
That's it.
Commissioner Pishney?
The, I, I missed the Economic Development meeting due to a family commitment last time. And the Extension Board had its budget and R and R hearing in the last couple of weeks. And the Extension Board did adhere to R and R this year. So they're trying to be very prudent with their budgeting process. The other thing that the Chairman insinuated I might want to speak to just briefly today is the L V, L A V T R. It's always hard for me to say that acronym in the proper order. And two things I wanted to mention, and one of them ties to what Larry's just mentioned, and that is the push for this 4% cap on valuations. But also, the KAC and the KCCA are working hard to have presentations ready for the legislative session on this L A V T R, which is the Local Ad Valorem Tax Reduction. And that hasn't been funded for about 20 years. The concerning things are that leadership is still skeptical about altering L A V T R, having any funding going toward that. But two things I wanted to say, as I've mentioned, one is the Chairman of the Tax Committee, Karen Tyson, Senator Tyson, and this was in a newsletter we should have all received, but she addressed the Miami County Commissioners, which is the county in which she resides. And she is pushing for the 4% cap, cap that was referenced. And told that, that commission, Miami County Commission, she didn't like the non, she didn't offer any details, but she is not in favor of funding the L A V T R because she thinks it's too wide open for how the monies are used. And I don't think by statute that it is that wide open. So there's that misinterpretation, I think, on her part. But what I did want to say for the public record is on the KAC website are two Excel spreadsheets. And I visited with Jay Hall about this quite a bit the other day. One is a spreadsheet if the state would have funded the 54 million this past year, which was proposed but didn't go anywhere. We would have received in Fannie County another $691,750 or 1.2 approximately mils. So that would have helped us today with our budget reductions if we wanted to do that. The other is the Excel spreadsheet on the KAC website that allows us to put in the number and then the calculator goes to work. So if the state does come back and say, we're going to fund 30 million, or we're going to fund 100 million, or some number, we can plug that into the Excel worksheet and see right away what it would mean to Fannie County. So I just want to make sure we've got that on our, our radar, that we have that tool available to us from KAC with regard to L A V T R. And then lastly, they, on Hutch Post yesterday, they had a nice article about Reno County and what the, the L A V T R means to them and, and how they're supporting the push to reinstate funding of that. And then I did attend the Farm Bureau Annual Meeting here in Fannie County, the County Farm Bureau Annual Meeting a week ago. And I did open the door with them as well. And their District Representative, Jim Sykes from Johnson, was in attendance. And he's going to go look at the Kansas Farm Bureau policies and see if there's been any discussion about that subject from the Farm Bureau perspective too. Because Farm Bureau has always been pushing for lower property taxes within the counties. And it may be that they would get behind something like this as well. So I did open the door for that discussion at the local county Farm Bureau Board Annual Meeting. That's it. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Driz.
No report this month.
Commissioner Jones?
Don't have much. I attended a meeting at the Senior Center with the Nutrition Committee. That's the meeting, the meals I have at the center at, at noon and also Meals on Wheels. And it's, it's interesting listening to the, to the wishlist, if you will, of things that would make their lives better, like a hydration cart, a cart to haul trays so that they don't have to, to throw their back out of place hauling dinner trays around. I, I suggested to them that they take that to the Board of Aging and then go from there. But again, it points out that at the Senior Center, they have a building in bad shape and, and some needs that have been identified without a budget authority to, to produce revenue to pay for what they think they need. That said, I also attended a Library Board meeting. It was rather routine and, and those, as I mentioned earlier, have been moved to, to the fourth Monday to accommodate schedules at 5:00 PM. So that's it.
Thank you. A report that I serve on the Compass Area Mental Health Board and that facility is undergoing tremendous change and growth because of its designation as a large community healthcare CBHCC designation, for those acronyms that are out there. 17 additional people were added during the months of June and July to the staff at Compass Area Mental Health. And of course, they had some normal loss of persons. We will continue to work on that designation for the benefit of all of southwest Kansas. Mental health care in southwest Kansas is and remains critically underserved with no mental health confinement facility within 100 miles, Larned being the closest at 101 miles. So something for all of us in southwest Kansas to continue to do is to take care of those who are in need. Mental health services, behavioral health, critically important to our community. I will comment about the proposal to cap appraisals at 4%. In my opinion, that's nonsense. And that carries no weight with me whatsoever. The appraiser's job is to, to appraise property at its fair market value. And if your fair market value goes up, your taxes are going to go up. And the people in Topeka had every opportunity to provide ad valorem tax relief this year. The state takes 21 mils out of this county and puts it to use as the legislature sees fit. It's been reported that the legislature had $804 million of excess funds beyond that anticipated. And yet in the 2023 session provided zero tax relief to our homeowners and taxpayers in Fannie County, or the whole state for that matter. It seems to me that there's a lot of options. And just because reducing property taxes is somebody else's idea, it's not a bad idea. They need to get it done. That's why Commissioner Jones suggests that we meet directly with our legislators to make it clear that ad valorem tax relief doesn't have to come through the form of a L A T V R formula. They can simply cut the 21 mils and get off the backs of property taxpayers to fund the general fund budget of the state. That's my 10 cents worth for today. Is there anything else from the Commission otherwise that entertain a motion to adjourn?
A move or adjourn?
Is there a second? Moving second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.